I'd like to call this meeting to order. We get started. Tonight, we're here early for the Virginia Board of Education Exemplar Award recognition. Before we get started, Ms. Amish has submitted a written request to virtually attend this evening's meeting due to a personal conflict. All those in favor of approving Mrs. Amish's request. Okay, that is unanimous. Madam Clerk, do we have the same request for Ms. Cohen?
We do not, and we are trying to make sure that Ms. Amish is with us in just a second.
I'm here!
There she is.
Okay, there we go. There's our mic check. Okay, thank you for joining us for this special recognition in advance of our regular meeting tonight. I would like to recognize our guests from the City of Fairfax who are attending tonight to support the City of Fairfax schools. Tonight, we have Ms. Carolyn Pitches, City of Fairfax School Board Chair, Ms. Sarah Kelzey, Ms. Rachel McQuillan, Mrs. Amit Hickman, and Stacy Hall, school board members, and Mr. Jeff Plattenberg, City of Fairfax School Superintendent. Thank you all for being with us tonight. I am now going to turn it over to Superintendent Reed to help us kick off our recognition ceremony.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Tonight, we are honored to recognize schools that have received special recognition from the Virginia Board of Education for their student achievement. The Exemplar Performance School Awards recognize schools that exceed Boarded Established Requirements or show continuous improvement on academic and school quality indicators. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Giovanni Ponce, our Chief of Schools, Mr. Douglas Tyson, Assistant Superintendent for Region 1, Ms. Megan Broman, Assistant Superintendent for Region 2, Mr. Jesse Kraft, Executive Principal on behalf of Dr. Grace Taylor, Region 3, Ms. Penny Gross, Assistant Superintendent Region 4, Ms. Becky Baneig, Assistant Superintendent Region 5, and Dr. Michelle Boyd, Assistant Superintendent Region 6, to come up and begin our presentation of our award-winning schools to our award-winning staff. Thank you.
Good evening. At this time, we will recognize each school in their respective categories. Principals and staff, please stand when your school is recognized. After all recognitions are complete for each category, individual schools will be invited to have a photo with the board, Dr. Reed, and the Regional Assistant Superintendent. I would like to invite Region 4 Assistant Superintendent Ms. Penny Gross to begin our recognition.
Thank you. To achieve the 2023 Exemplar Performance Highest Achievement Award, a school must earn a state accreditation rating of accredited and meet the following benchmarks: 70% pass rate on state assessments in science and mathematics; 75% pass rate on state assessment in English reading; for schools with two student groups, there is no more than five percentage points between the lowest performing group and all other students in the school; and for schools with three or more student groups, there is no more than 10 percentage points between the lowest performing group and all other students in the school. There are four schools that earn the Board of Education Highest Achievement Award. They are Sangster Elementary School, Allison Jankovic, Principal; Spring Hill Elementary School, Amy Briggs, Principal; Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, Dr. Anne Bonitabas, Principal; and Westbrier Elementary School, Mary Tam, Principal.
Let's give them a big round of applause, please. Another one, but big, please. At this time, we ask the school board members, Dr. Reed, and the Regional Assistant Superintendents, to come forward to the front of the dais and to greet our award recipient, present them with a certificate, and take a photo with each school. Please remain until photos with all four schools have been taken.
I would like to invite those here from Westbrier Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Spring Hill Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Sangster Elementary School to please join the board for a photo.
So, we have two options. You can keep standing while we keep reading, or you can go back and then I'll call you back. Assistant Superintendent for Region 4, Penny Gross, will continue with the 2023 Exemplar Award for Continuous Improvement. Again, principals and staff, please stand when your school is recognized. After all recognitions are complete for this category, individual schools will be invited to have a photo with the board, Dr. Reed, and the Regional Assistant Superintendent.
All right. To earn the Exemplar Award for Continuous Improvement, a school must earn an accreditation rating of accredited or accredited with conditions and meet at least one of the following criteria. The school demonstrates an increase in the combined rate for math, reading, and science for each of the past three school years. For 2023 only, these include 2017, 2018, 2018-19, and 2021-22, with a total increase across the three years of 10 points or more. Or the school demonstrates an increase in the Graduation and Completion Index for each of the past three years. Again, those years are 2017-18, 18-19, and 21-22, with a total increase across the three years of 4% or more. And school demonstrates a decrease in the dropout rate for each of those same years with a total reduction across three years of 15% or more of the first year's dropout rate.
Twenty-one schools received the 2023 Exemplar Award for Continuous Improvement. They are Annandale High School.
Sean DeRose, Principal.
Annandale Terrace Elementary School.
Ingrid Bedea, Principal.
Velbedir Elementary School.
Cecilia Vanderheij, Principal.
Okay. I thought they would call it. Brookfield Elementary School.
Ellen Mukai, Principal.
Centralville Elementary School.
Josh Dowd, Principal.
Cunningham Park Elementary.
Allison Hoak, Principal.
Dransville Elementary.
Jamie Gadley, Principal.
Falls Church High School.
Ben Noack, Principal.
For Velver Primary.
Zed Jemison, Principal.
Herdon Elementary School.
Candace Hunstead, Principal.
Kathery Johnson Middle School.
Tammy Silipini, Principal.
Laurel Hill Elementary School.
Janice Dalton, Principal.
Louis Archer Elementary.
Michelle Macrageorgios, Principal.
Mount Vernon Woods Elementary.
Gina O'Neil, Principal.
Orange Hunt Elementary.
Karen Tuttle, Principal.
Providence Elementary.
Andrew Pratt, Principal.
Ross Hill Elementary School.
Rachel Edwards, Principal.
Silverbrook Elementary School.
Pamela Simkins, Principal.
South County Middle School.
Justin Simmons, Principal.
Virginia Run Elementary School.
Liz Bumbry, Principal.
And West Potomac High School.
Kevin McMahon, Interim Principal. Let's give them a big round of applause, and at this time, we do ask that our board members, Dr. Reed and the Regional Assistant Superintendents, remain at the front of the dais and greet our awards recipients, present them with a certificate, and take a photo with each school. Please remain until the photos with each of the schools have been taken.
I would like to invite those here from West Potomac High School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Virginia Run Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from South County Middle School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Silverbrook Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Rose Hill Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from the City of Fairfax and Providence Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Orange Hunt Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Laurel Hill Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from the City of Fairfax and Catherine Johnson Middle School to please join the board for a photo. to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Herndon Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Fort Belvoir Primary to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Fort Belvoir Primary to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Falls Church High School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Dreamsville Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Cunningham Park Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Centerville Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Brookfield Elementary to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Louise Archer Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. That's what I'm told. I would like to invite those here from Belvedere Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Annandale Terrace Elementary School to please join the board for a photo. I would like to invite those here from Annandale High School to please join the board for a photo. That concludes all of the pictures.
This concludes our award recognition for this evening. We congratulate the principals, administrators, teachers, support staff, students, and parents. Thank you very much.